We open that meeting?
Seven thirty-eight.
You don't like my, um, speech?
No, I think it's great. It's just I've heard it more than once.
Yeah, well.
I don't know why you keep reading it to me. I've already heard it.
I have.
He he changes it, though.
I tried.
I appreciate it.
Really do so much. I actually got shit for it once.
I've copied what what you say, but without the 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 important bits that are your personality, because I said that that would be plagiarism and I can't do that, so.
Certainly can.
I use I use most of your model, but not all of it.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was told that I shouldn't limit my embellishments.
Really? You were admonished?
Uh huh, yes, not professional. All right, so we'll stop this. Shin dig. Good evening. This is Tuesday, July thirteenth, oh my goodness, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a plenary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you, the ugly T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything else you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach?
Affirmative.
Timothy Wheeler?
Here.
Carolyn McDonald?
Aye, aye.
And Tom Sanford here. Anticipated speakers and agenda we will get to in a moment. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty P M. Tuesday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board to be conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order supersedes the requirement of open meeting laws to have all meetings held in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes the links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they've concluded their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your microphone or computer when you're not speaking, to speak clearly, to ensure that accurate minutes of the meeting are recorded, and for any responses, please wait until you're yielded before to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding. So, we've opened the meeting. And the first, there wasn't, I went through the the mail. There wasn't anything that was really, you know, earth shattering. There was a bunch of notices for hearings for other towns and what have you. Um, there was some information from Court of Appeals on a couple of pending cases, but it wasn't anything that really affected us, so. Um, there's nothing really to share with that. There is one, we have one bill, and I'm not sure whether we've paid it or not. It was for Gatehouse Media for four hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, it just says classified ads, planning board. So, I don't know what that would have been.
No date or anything?
The date was five one, that was May, five one to five thirty-one.
Um, probably the notice in the paper for the public hearing for the town meeting.
Would that have been a Planning Board, though?
Yeah.
Our public hearings?
Our public hearings.
Okay.
How much was it? Eighty some?
Uh, four hundred and three dollars.
Yeah, it was a big one. Yeah.
Yeah, and eighty-four cents.
Yeah, let's pay it. I move that we pay four hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents to
Gatehouse?
Gatehouse for the hearing notice that was held, that was put in the item.
Second.
Four hundred and three eighty dollars, how much? Four hundred and three point eight four. Okay, I got a a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? No, giving none, I will call your name to vote. Uh, we'll go backwards. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. We will pay this two feet. Um, you know what? I'm gonna get crap. I need an extra signature. I can't sign it just by myself, so I'm gonna have to run around and get somebody else's signature.
Out of magazine?
Who's around this week? Anybody?
I'm here all week.
I'm around.
Okay, um, I'll try tomorrow night, Wednesday. Uh, I think I can do it tomorrow night. If people are around. All right, I'll do that. I got chastised once again.
Uh.
I am. I'm the dog. I can't do anything.
Okay, we need to vote on the minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes from June eleventh, eighth?
Yep.
June eighth and that the only one?
You know, I think there's a bunch of them, because for some reason did we not vote on all, I sent a whole slew of them out last time.
Right, and we, I think we hadn't men, uh, read them yet.
Right.
And so we waited another meeting.
And the two, so, so my motion will be to accept the June eighth and the May, um.
I'll figure out what the other ones are on already.
May twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
May eleventh?
Oh, sorry.
Eleventh and May twenty.
May eleventh, May twenty-fifth. You wanna go back further?
No, that's enough. That's enough.
It's all the ones that I sent you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So, May, so what was it again, Jim?
May twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
May eleventh?
Yeah.
And then June eighth.
Uh, there was more than that.
There was an April.
April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh. All right, we got all those. Good. Cool.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None?
Yeah, what great minutes.
Yeah, it's awesome.
They were awesome, except for the typos, you know?
Hey, I'm just looking for your email. I can't find it.
Yeah, it was number three. It was talking about the Stonewall.
Yeah.
That parking R instead of parking area.
Oh, area. Oh, got it. Okay, that's all fixed. We're all set with that one then.
Awesome.
Undrafted. Good.
Okay. I'll ask you to vote on acceptance of the meetings. Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. All righty, moving right along. We have an A and R. I sent it around. I I scanned it and sent it around. Apparently, it was sent by electronic late this afternoon, but whatever. It's the, um, Indian uh.
Farm Road, I think.
Hmm?
Wasn't it Indian Farm Road?
Yeah, Indian Farm Road. And the opponent is Indian Pharma Estates LLC.
Well, there's.
Did you guys, there's a couple of people?
Okay, there's two people in the audience, but it's hard to tell what they're here for. There's actually three, but one's Eloise, so.
Okay, so, um, is there a James?
No, well, there's, it says Hudson Business Association.
Okay.
And, oop, and Hudson Business Association is raising their hand.
Okay, and can you promote them, please?
I can.
Thank you.
And Tom DePercio has also raised a hand.
Junior, yep.
Uh, promote him as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Got it.
There we go. I can see Tom, too.
There we go.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Hi, good, thanks.
Good. Can you guys chat a little bit about what you're proposing?
Sure. I can go through that quickly. So can you folks see the plan? Is it?
Handle that.
No, is it on your screen, Tom?
Well, I can put it on my screen, I think. Somehow, I've got through the past year and a half without using this particular meeting software, so um, I'm not sure how to share my screen, but I'm I'm ready to do it if if you guys have to do that, or.
Uh, so if you move your cursor, a bar will show up at the bottom and in green, it's a share screen. You click that, and then it will show all of the windows that you have open. You wanna click, you wanna choose the appropriate one.
Okay.
There you go.
Gotcha.
Okay, so this is the subdivision that, um, Brian has under construction off of River Road East that is almost entirely in Hudson, but the frontage for the original parcel uh, is in Berlin. Uh, you folks saw this subdivision plan before it was, um, approved. It was signed by the Berlin Planning Board and the Hudson Planning Board. And with with this plan, Brian wants to divide the two lots that, the two first lots on each side of the new road, which are lot one and lot seventeen, both of those because of the the shape of the original parcels, the odd shape and the narrow uh, piece that, uh, has the frontage along the road. Both of these lots have some extra frontage and extra area kind of tails that extend up toward River Road East. So with this plan, what we're looking to do is just subdivide each of those lots and just cut off the excess uh, area that is, um, on each lot to create parcels, what we're calling Parcel I and Parcel H. Because each of the lots in each of these parcels is partially in Berlin and partially in Hudson, um, we need to get the plan endorsed by both planning boards. So, um, the the outcome of this subdivision would be just lot, what is now lot one will become lot one A, and it will be a more, more conventionally shaped lot, um, with seventeen thousand plus square feet. And what is now lot seventeen will be lot seventeen A with sixteen thousand plus square feet. Both of those lots are entirely in Hudson. And there, uh, they meet the zoning requirements for lots in in that district of the Town of Hudson. And there'll be two parcels that Brian will retain, and each of the parcels have a small piece that's in Berlin. Um, obviously, uh, these, neither of these parcels constitute a buildable lot in either Hudson or Berlin. So that that's the nature of the plan.
Why wouldn't you identify the lots as non-buildable lots?
There is a note, um, there is a note here that indicates they're not to be considered separate building lots.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, um, you're correct to to look for that, and and that is on the plan.
Who ultimately is gonna be responsible for the upkeep of those lots?
Of the, uh, these excess parcels?
Yeah.
So, Brian will retain those and, um, you know, if he were to acquire either of these abutting properties, they would be combined with those. Um, if he didn't, he he would continue to own those and either convey them or own them himself and be responsible for them.
Does any of the other board members have any questions or comments? You see, Tim is studying this intensely.
Um, no, I I move that we accept a plan um, showing property of Indian Pharma Estates, the plan drawn by Thomas DePercio and Associates, dated July second, twenty twenty-one. I guess, I think that's the date, isn't it? Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and the deed references Book one, five, two, oh, three, page one, twenty-six. That's Middlesex County Registry of Deeds, huh?
Right. So Worcester's ninety, uh, nine, four, seven, Plan ninety-six.
Okay. Um, creating lots or or actually creating a new lot one A and a new lot seventeen A with, is that Parcel I?
Yes.
Parcel I and and Parcel H, both Parcel I and Parcel H not to be considered a buildable lot. As noted in the notes, approval under the subdivision control are not required. I think that's all I've got to say.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional comments by any of the board members? Any comment? Is there anybody in the audience that has the hand up? Carolyn?
Uh, hold on one second. I need to uh, nope.
Okay. So if we have no pending comments and no additional comments, then I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Vote carries unanimously. Uh, thank you. Um, so gentlemen, I did not get the Mylar that was put in our mailbox today. So, um, well, I'll grab those out of the out of the mailbox, and I have to ferry around and get some signatures anyway, so I'll get those signed uh, tomorrow night, and then I'll put them back in our mailbox, so, um, they can be retrieved probably what's tomorrow night, Thursday. You guys can retrieve me the Thursday or or Friday. What I will need, though, is I do have the Form A, um, which we'll sign and and date, um, but I will need a check for Town of Berlin for seventy-five dollars. Okay, you guys could put that.
I'll make sure I drop that off tomorrow.
Perfect. All right, fantastic. And then I can retrieve that, and you guys can have the signed copies. All right?
Thank you. And there is two Mylars because it has to go to both registries, so.
Yeah, so we need to sign both of them. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Explanation. I have two paper copies here, so I can take and bring those around with me. And those will be for us. Perfect. All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good night.
Hey.
Good night.
See ya.
All right.
Looks like his father. Do you remember Tom Senior? DePercio Senior? He was did land surveying, too.
He looked familiar, but I assumed he just has been before us before.
Hasn't.
Oh, really?
Well, not for a while.
Huh.
But his dad was, dad was, I think his dad retired down to the Cape.
Huh.
We, I don't know, ten years ago, maybe now?
Hmm, before my time.
For your time, yeah, yeah. He was living up in, um, the reason I know is he was living up in, um, where my folks live.
Oh, cool.
A bit, and then he retired, moved down the Cape. So, um, we have, I forwarded around an email that I got late. I got it like at six thirty. Um, and it was from Steve Venkasa.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it or review it, um, but I did email it around. Um, and that's part of what he's gonna talk about when he's next on our agenda. Um, so he has a proposal, um, to meet the affordable component of the, um, over fifty-five that he's constructing.
Oh, was that what it's in reference to? So I did read it, but I didn't really understand.
I didn't, I thought it was, yeah, a little bit more.
Was it a separate project? Was it a?
Yeah, I don't know. It's part of the proposed proposal that he's going to to make to us. Um, I had asked for a copy of it earlier so that we would have had a chance to read it and digest it a little bit, but I I just got it, so you got it when I got it. Um, so, but he's next on the agenda, so if he's in the audience.
Yep.
Yeah. Can you promote him up so we can chat?
Indeed.
Uh, can you hear me, Tom? I can, Steve, and I apologize for butchering your last name. Um, you probably did as good as I would do if it wasn't my own. I learned it from your old age. Ben Venkasa, uh, and this is my nephew Jim Venkasa with me here today. Okay.
Your camera's not on.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay. He's more technologically. Um, so what we're, uh, what we'd like to propose to the town is an alternate, um, uh, we're under the, um, our permit was subject to building ten affordable housing in this Highland Ridge, uh, over fifty-five community, and then, um, about a year or two ago, I I'm losing track of time now, uh, uh, DHCD uh, said that, you know, these developments couldn't be age restricted, and then, uh, I think you did a vote, that you voted that these ten units would not be age restricted so that they would count on the HSI uh, count for the affordable housing in town, um, because you wanted that, those ten units to be counted towards your, towards your total, towards your group total. Um, since then, we've been, uh, working in a number of other communities and, um, uh, we've been building, uh, community, um, residential programs, and we've worked with John Knessel, um, building, um, community residential homes for, um, people with disabilities. And DHCD, um, they would give you, the town, a credit of one unit for each bedroom that we built.
Correct.
So we build a four-bedroom house that's equivalent to four housing units. So you would still get the same amount of housing credits, and this has been approved by DHCD. We, you know, this is in their, um, I don't know, in their rules or in their bylaws or whatever, but it it does count as an affordable unit. So we have ten, um, we're obligated to build ten affordable units in town, uh, and in lieu of that, what we'd like to do is build um, these community residential homes that would be suitable for people with disabilities. So we have one of our associates, uh, Sean Knessel, that's on the, uh, the Zoom meeting. We're we're actually in your town hall, a a meeting. We thought this is gonna be a live meeting, so we're at your town hall.
Yeah.
All alone.
Thought I recognized that ceiling.
We're all alone here.
Yeah.
Because.
We don't know how to work them.
Uh, Tom, there is someone named Sean in the audience.
Yeah. Can you promote them, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sean, are you there?
I, yes, sorry, I was just trying. Yeah, my name is Sean Kinstella. I'm, uh, for, I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for Kin Casa. Um, do you want me to give you a little bit more background about what we're doing?
Sure, please.
The Kin Casa is, um, an organization that we, um, pair builders with, um, community providers in order to build, produce, and then the providers run community high-end, custom-designed community residential programs for people who are predominantly moving out of nursing facilities with, um, disabilities. There's a high proportion of people who have um, acquired brain injuries that are predominantly from having strokes. Um, that's kind of the the bread and butter of who is placed in these programs. We're also placing people with developmental disabilities. Some of them are twenty-two, and they're aging out of the school system. And so the, um, state is rapidly expanding the number of, um, community residential programs, but they're very expensive to, um, build, particularly when you build them to the standards that we build them. And providers find it very difficult to, um, be able to afford that, and, uh, you know, we're not interested in people into substandard housing. So these all have things like extra wide corridors. They have extra wide doorways. Um, they have rollout rooms. We build everything to grade, so there aren't kind of ugly ramps for people's wheelchairs. All of the kitchens and the bathrooms are fully accessible. Everything is wheel under. Um, they have a medication dispensing room. Um, some of them have track systems in, um, we've built them so far in Shrewsbury, um, Hockington, um, Southborough. Uh, we're building some more in Shrewsbury, some more in Grafton, uh, Millbury, Auburn, so we've been doing quite a few in the area. So what we are hoping to do is apply those builders' credits towards the cost of building the community residential programs so that the providers who end up either buying or renting the programs are able to do so at reduced cost. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
So you 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 retain the property and lease these to service providers for individuals?
So that that depends on the provider. Predominantly, what we're doing is, um, giving providers a, um, thirty-year capital lease. So they rent for thirty years. They build up equity in the property through the rent, and then in thirty years, we donate that to the nonprofit agency.
Okay.
Your nonprofit or their non?
Their nonprofit, so the provider agency.
So you guys are writ, or you guys, uh, uh, five oh one three C?
So, uh, Kin Casa is a five oh one three C, and we work with for-profit builders as well.
Okay.
Non nonprofit and for-profit builders, so it's kind of a a mix of both.
So have they, have you guys identified any parcels in town or is this just there uh, to see if there's an appetite?
Uh, we have providers that we're actively working with who are um, very keen on um, siting in Berlin. Um, and we're working with them to um finalize where those would be. They are. Uh, it's, it's a it's a, it's a very attractive area for them to have participants. They have people who are on the waitlist. There's, there's about um, right now, there's about five hundred people in nursing facilities on the waitlist. So there's a huge demand. Um, and uh, Berlin is one of the towns that has been identified as being in need for this.
So the, the typical building units that you build, are they all like four bedrooms or are they bigger than that?
So we can do a uh, we, we have done, we typically, they run um, either three-bed, four-bed, five-bed or um, a six-bed duplex that it's um, they're not allowed to be bigger than that um, because of um, it's called proximity. So you're only allowed to cite them. Um, EO HHS only allows you to cite a certain number of people within a given radius. So we're restricted to the numbers in any one place.
So you realize that the town of Berlin's well is in septic. So if you propose a duplex, you're proposing shared services?
I think for Ber- Berlin, we're actually not proposing any duplexes. We're just proposing single-family for four or five bed would be the most likely.
So there would have to be several of those to make up your ten units.
Probably two five-bedroom units.
That's, that's the most likely, yes, two five-beds. And they've been hugely successful. Um, you know, we've found that by having very um, custom-designed, high-end um, programs that the, the people who are living there have a therapeutic benefit that is unlike moving into kind of an old cramped re- rehabbed home. Um, the people who uh, work there, because there are, you know, staff members providing um, care for those individuals are happier and there's greater attention. Um, we, we are very careful in placing with um, you know, how we blend in with neighborhoods and um, you know, we we don't look different. That's why we build them at grade level so that we don't have stigmatizing ramps and things like that. We tend to hide parking around the back, those kinds of things.
Um, the, can you provide us later on, doesn't have to be right this second, but later on with um, some addresses in Shrewsbury and Southborough and Grafton, so we may get a sense of what you guys have done and what it looks like?
Sure.
I think that might be helpful to us. Does anybody have any additional comments? Board members?
So this would bring the number of affordable units built on Howland Street down to zero? Is that the idea?
Yes.
So it's a swap. You're swapping your requirement to another parcel in town.
Right, exactly. And we, you know, we're, we're we've built these in a number of towns and and um, there's a number of towns that are, that are agreeable with the concept. We're doing it in Bellingham, we're doing it in Milbury. Um, we're doing the exact same thing as what we're proposing with you. Um, we think it's a round-in.
Yeah.
It's a brand-new, it's a brand-new facility. These are very expensive buildings to build. And so the builder is, you know, using some of those credits to subsidize the price to make this affordable so that these are people with lower incomes that, you know, struggle uh, being able to afford these units. This lowers the cost.
In order for people to live in the facilities, they have to be mass health eligible, which also means that they meet any of the income requirements.
And are these, are these one for one? So yeah. If you need, you need to build ten units on Highland Street, right?
Correct.
Mean you're gonna build two buildings with five units in each one instead?
Correct.
You're going to build ten buildings to building two buildings, right?
No, no, two buildings with five bedrooms each.
And is that what the other towns have allowed you to do?
Yes.
We even allow five, five-bedroom homes?
If the septic system will handle it, then yes.
Yeah.
The other, the other reason why there's some towns have, you know, come to us and are, are keen to do this is because these properties don't impact the um, schools, the use of schools, but the, the people who are moving into them are tend to be in their fifty, sixty, seventies, moving out of nursing facilities. So you know, they're not bringing children with them and they're also not vacating other houses where families with children may be moving in. So it doesn't have a negative impact on the finances of the town.
But the total number of people that are provided housing by this is substantially less. Because you're making room for ten people as opposed to twenty or thirty that would be in the ten units that you would otherwise build. Right?
In the over fifty-five community?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so is there staff round the clock or, or just um, part-time?
It's usually around the clock. It depends on the needs of the individuals, but in the majority of cases, it's very rare not be around the clock.
And, and tell me again, what the, the, the program essentially that the state is using as an umbrella for this is, is what, what's it called?
I'm not sure what you mean. Um.
So who, there must be some state agency that has some oversight for these?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's the Department of Developmental Services.
Okay. And, and so what role do they play?
They license the facilities. Um, they uh, place the individuals in, in the programs. Um, they uh, provide them with I think it's like quarterly meetings and then annual individual support plan meetings, which are like an IEP but for adults. Um, they uh, finance it. Um, so they finance the um, staffing that goes in there.
They do, they vice, they, they oversee the staff?
The, the, the uh, nonprofit agencies, the provider agencies.
Okay.
See the staff. But the um, but the Department of Developmental Services contracts to the nonprofit agency.
And so all the provider agencies are generally nonprofit?
Yeah, there's, there's actually only one in Massachusetts that is for-profit and we're not working with that provider. And the properties are all deed restricted as well, so.
So they're deed restricted?
Yep.
And then it, it's so normally with, with affordable units, there's a lottery when a vacancy occurs. Uh, do, do they use a similar type of lottery in this case or or is it, the oversight comes from the Department of Developmental Services?
It's different because the Department of Developmental Services or DDS as it's called um, places the individuals. So they're making the decisions about who is living there. And that happens all across the state.
And like you've said, there's, there's a tremendous number of people on the waiting list, so there's no risk of not having qualified individuals looking for these facilities, right?
Oh, no, there's, there is no risk. And even you, you know, there, there are there are, you know, different facilities like this or different programs like this that serve the needs of different individuals. We're building these to such a high standard that uh, you know, if a provider agency has somewhere that they're renting that isn't all that great, then they're gonna move the people from you know, the, the not-so-great to the kind of houses that we are providing. There's, there are, you know, we can't build these fast enough. There are providers knocking on our door saying, how many of these can you give us? That's, but you know, there is a limit to the amount of land and the amount of builders and, you know, all of those kinds of things that is what is slowing this down. This is a huge demand. And those people, those people are living in nursing facilities unnecessarily with a drain on the mass health dollars. It's, it's much, much, much more expensive to serve those people in a nursing facility. And they're staying on the waitlist for two years, three years before they can be considered for a placement.
What's the turnover average timewise on these units?
Um, you know, from, once the permits are received, then.
No, I mean of the patients.
They, it's their home. They, they don't, they, if they move out, they're generally moving out either because they are very sick and going somewhere that they are receiving a higher level of medical care or they're staying there to the end of their lives. And one of the great things about it is that these facilities are able to provide hospice care. So people are able to age in place and they're able to die in dignity, die with dignity, surrounded by their families, surrounded by people they know without having to go somewhere that's impersonal.
So the homes are designed to have like a, a communal space, communal um, kitchen, communal um, bathroom facilities and then everybody has a bedroom or five, five people have a bedroom?
Yeah. So the way we've been designing, each one is a little bit different depending on what the providers want, but um, there tends to be uh, four bedrooms, two very accessible bathrooms. They tend to be wet rooms so that they're all completely barrier-free. Um, and there is a, a med room and an office. And then we have um, in the middle kind of, uh, we have a completely accessible kitchen so that people are able to utilize that themselves or the staff members can do that. And then we have what was originally designed to be a dining room, but in the last couple, the last year or so has become the tally health room. Um, so we, we put um, you know, conferencing facilities in that room so people can visit their doctors and stuff virtually. Um, so it's, it's a private uh, shared room. And then we have a, a pretty big family room um, so that people can hang out together and do activities or whatever, watch TV. Um, and then they all have a patio out the back so people can enjoy the outside and have a grill and, you know, just kind of do the things that you or I would do in our homes. It's fair, it's, they're really kind of cleverly designed to be a balance between can't make things look too institutional and feel too institutional. The whole point is that we're trying to get people out of institutions that they don't need to be in. Um, so we're trying to create as home-like an environment as possible, but you've got to take into account people's uh, disabilities and people's uh, medical status and make sure that everybody is, you know, served respectfully and safe.
So it's a single-story?
Yeah. Sometimes we put an office upstairs, sometimes we put the office downstairs, but the um, participants will all be on one floor.
Yeah, yeah. So you guys retain the title to the property and then you lease it to um, service providers?
For most service providers, the financial uh, situation that they, the financial arrangement that they have requested is a thirty-year capital lease.
Okay, but you guys are the holder of the lease until they pay it off?
Correct.
Okay, so we, I'm just looking for the, you know, for, from a town's standpoint, what do these look like in ten, fifteen years? Are they gonna be, you know, the upkeep gonna be there? You know, is it gonna be, you know, a housing stock that after the end of the lease it's still desirable and it's not falling apart and no one wants to be there anymore and all of a sudden we've inherited an eyesore?
So we have put a, a lot into that and I, I think you know, we designed the landscaping and we designed the house so that upkeep is easy to do. We actually also have um, a company that is in central Massachusetts is providing um, the maintenance for providers who want us to do that. But most of the big providers have their own maintenance departments and want to do that themselves. Um, you know, so um, um, they, they have pretty big maintenance teams um, and have scheduled and routine maintenance. They have, you know, like a monthly schedule, a quarterly schedule, an annual schedule, a five-hour, five-yearly schedule to make sure that doesn't happen. And these are, you know, these are a nice houses that they're gonna want to keep up.
Can you tell us more about the economics of this? So I think all we know about the uh, standard requirement is the price that you're required to sell the property for, right? How do we, how is uh, what do we know about how much you'll spend to build what you're normally required to build versus how much you're gonna spend to do what you're proposing to do now? And what do we get to see of that?
I think that's a Steve and Jim question you're asking about the building costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not, you're not selling these in, in the DHCDs. They're gonna be giving you the credit. So there's no, there's no uh, sale per se, like, you know, on a, if you're doing an affordable house and you're selling it to, you know, in the affordable housing and doing the lottery like you're saying. Um, because you go through that process, obviously, in order to get that credit. Um, these homes were, they're already giving you the credits. So you don't really, you're not going through the process of selling them and, 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 and doing that whole thing. You're, you're gonna get the credits, the, the five credits on each home. If I'm understanding the question correctly.
And what's the cost to build one of these?
About a million two-ish.
A million two each.
Yeah.
Build up.
Maybe two million four, depending on, you know, the finishes and whatnot.
Um, what does it cost to build the affordable units you're, that you were originally signed up for?
About two hundred thousand a unit.
So it's twice as much money for you to do this?
No. Ten, twenty percent more.
They have to build two?
Yeah, so say that's two.
So it's two million? As opposed, as opposed to ten units?
Two hundred thousand, it's two million. Same.
Oh, yeah. Little math challenge there on that one.
I think we were all trying to work that out.
Yeah.
One part of the town to another, that's all.
Right. Tom, I have a question.
Sure.
If, if, let's say we decided to support something like this, would it have to go to town meeting for approval?
It's a good question. I mean, this is a substantial change to what was.
Not only to their agreement, but is there any place else in town where something like this would, where the zoning would already allow for something like this?
I don't think there would be a zoning problem, do you, Tim? If it's a single-family, five-bedroom unit? Would it fall under the?
You know, we've, we've got a provision in our bylaw.
Right.
For the creation of a in appearance, single-family structure with what we called for was multiple. what we called for was multiple apartments.
Right.
All of which would have been affordable. So this isn't, this, this is a, an adjustment to that. It's, you end up with a, a structure that looks like a single family residence to a degree. But instead of having multiple apartments, all of which would count, you end up with multiple rooms that come because the state is willing to recognize that because they're after the group home option. And we've got one group home in town already.
I think it's Seven Hills that operates that one.
Yeah, might be.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, it's, it, it was under the radar.
Well, we do allow, um, if, if it falls under the residential care facility not to exceed six patients.
Right.
Um, it's under the RA, it's allowable with, uh, uh, an S, um, special permit.
So i- if you're talking about as far as zoning wise, as far as, you know, of us building the home there, um, this also, they do fall under the Dover amendment, um, which is an educational facility because they are, we are, you know, providing them, you know, care and, and education in order, you know, to get back to the community possibly. Um, so it does fall under the Dover. So as far as the zoning requirements, we, we really are able to kind of maybe bypass that or go into really any zone and, and build these.
Lucky for you that it is included in our educational institutional uses.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, I mean, these are, these are single family homes. They're,
They are.
They're not care facilities. They are single family homes.
But the prob, so then probably the only thing that would need to go to town meeting would be changing the Highland Ridge agreement overlay. So I guess my, my real question, while in theory, this is all good. I don't know that it's going to be helpful for, I'm not really sure what the timing of the project over in Highland Ridge is, but it's not like this is something we could approve next month.
I, I, I don't believe it has to go to town meeting per se. I think the planning board themselves have the authority to make this decision.
That's what the other towns are doing. We're actually, we're, we've been working with the planning boards on this. It hasn't, we haven't had to go to town meetings.
So that's what you did in Grafton and Shrewsbury?
Um, it, yeah, Mil, Milbury right now specifically, um, we're working on it with them. And that, that, that's to go into the planning board. It's the very similar process.
Through the regional planning agency, I've got good contacts with Grafton and Shrewsbury. So if I spoke to folks there, they'd recognize what I was talking about.
Um, we've gone through the process in those towns specifically yet. Um, we're working in, we're working with those towns, but, um, specifically like more of this case would be of, in, in the Milbury project, um, which is, so we're basically doing the-
In Grafton, you're, you're just beginning the process or?
So Grafton, we did, we did the units in Grafton and Shrewsbury. We built them, but not through a boat. So this is a, this program that we're talking about you is subsidized by the builder. So this is subsidized by the builder in lieu of building affordable homes. In Shrewsbury, it was not done that way. In Grafton. In Milbury, it's going to be subsidized by the builder.
It's, so you're working on this in Milbury. Anybody else, the east of us that you've dealt with?
So we built in all these towns.
Yeah. They would be familiar with.
The same vehicle to get there.
Not the same program. No.
So there, there was a, there's a fund called FCF, um, through CDAC, the Facilities Consolidation Fund through CDAC. So our, the first ones that we were doing, we were using the FCF funds, but the FCF funds, because there is so, the demand is so high that the FCF funds now have, um, such a long waitlist for them that we are, um, exploring all different ways to finance them so that we can, um, have people move out of the nursing facilities quicker. FCF funds have a minimum of three year wait limit on them now, and that wait limit is growing every month. So that's what we were doing originally, but they're just, there isn't time to do that anymore.
And there's not available, enough available funds. So this is another funding mechanism.
Are any of the other projects that you've done this with in any of the other towns, did you change the agreement midstream? Is, is kind of what I'm getting at?
No.
Okay. So, so it, so it's not the same. And I personally believe that this would have to go to town meeting because the project was approved at town meeting. And this is what I would consider a substantial change. So that would have to be approved at town meeting.
I think that's a legal question that, you know, we, we haven't gone through this process in other towns, whether your town has regulations that are different, that require that, uh, I can't answer that. But we can get, we can look that up back to you. So we'll check with our council.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we obviously have to do some homework. I, we're, we're members of the ACABIT Regional Housing Consortium now, which has some staff that deals with a lot of affordable unit questions and, um, so, I mean, I, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to chat with them and I'm willing to work through the regional planning agency, CMRPC, to see who we could, we can, we can reach out to some folks in Milbury. I know some people there now. So I'm perfectly willing to do some homework, but I think like Carolyn is saying, um, you know, you, you have to build a certain number of affordable units in pace with the market rate units that you build at Highland Ridge. And if this is the vehicle you want to use, um, then we've got to get this squared away in order for you to move forward with your market rate units and, um, you know, I, I find this an attractive and appealing opportunity, but I'm not sure how fast and nimble we can be to keep you on track with the other, you know, market rate stuff that you're trying to do. So.
I, I appreciate your concern. We have the same concerns.
Yeah. So, I mean, obviously we, we'll chase, we'll talk to Margaret. We have talked to our council. We'll talk to, uh, ACABIT. We'll talk to CMRPC. We can, you know, because it's appealing to me. I, I like, I like the idea.
It's a great thing that we're doing. It's a great, it really is. You know, we can send you some pictures of the homes and, you know, layout of the homes that we've done. Um, they're, they're very nice.
And we'll give you the addresses of the other homes we built.
You know, I mean, Berlin's proud of the diversity of housing we've got for such a small town. And this did just add another dimension to that housing stock, which, um, has a lot of appeal.
Can I get two more numbers from you for the, um, so I understand the economics on it. What, when you sell the affordable units at Highland Ridge, what, what is the price going to be?
You know, I don't know what the number is exactly. It's in, in the low two hundreds, I believe.
It's in the low two hundreds?
I believe so. I, I, I can't say exactly what it is, but.
How is the price determined?
Eighty percent of the mean income for the subregion that we're part of.
Okay. So the state determines what the maximum price is.
This is a formula for it. Yes.
Yeah.
And we would hire a, uh, we, we hire an agency that handles that for us.
And then the capital lease. So what's the value of the property that's going to go into the, uh, lease formula for these new buildings?
It, it ranges really between a million two to a million four, depending on the finishes, what they, what they do.
You said what your cost was. I'm asking what the, what the sale price is when it gets, when the lease gets written.
So, yeah, what, what, at the end of the lease, there is, it, it gets transferred over. There, there is no, it.
It's one dollar.
Yeah.
So they're not paying you every month?
No, no, they're paying every month. You said at the end of thirty years.
No, I know. And I want to know, when you, when you write the lease agreement and you determine how much they're paying every month, what is the dollar, what's the principal? What's the, the dollar value of the property that you are leasing to them?
The range is.
They're a million two, a million four.
No, no, he, he wants to know the monthly, the monthly lease.
He asked about the month, what their monthly payment is.
No. Well, I mean, you're not, right? You take the interest rate in the term and that determines what the monthly payment is. So what is the principal? It's a lease for what dollar value? I mean, say you were selling it to a leasing company. What, what are you selling it for?
A million, two million four.
No.
We sell it for cost. I don't know what the cost is. It's not, it's not a profit.
So it's your, whatever your cost is, is what you're going to use as the value for the lease?
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a non-profit.
Why? You want to get in the game?
No, no, I just want to understand it. That's all.
I wouldn't advise it. There's no money in it.
Hence the word nonprofit.
It's a five bedroom house that they're selling for one point four million dollars.
That's, but it's all of that.
Pretty expensive. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not.
It's not a typical.
Yeah, it's not a typical. This is, this, there's a lot, lot, real lot that goes into these things.
And sprinkled in.
Oh, backup generators. We have, this is not typical.
I bet you it's all of a million two.
It is. It, yes, it is.
All said and done.
Yes.
We also build them, um, to a particular standard so that they last.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not cheap homes.
Carolyn, you had a comment, but.
I was just going to say that Eloise is in the audience and as a member of our affordable housing, well, as our, but it, what is it? Thank you. It wasn't coming to me. I wasn't sure if you wanted to see if she had any comments.
Um, that would be delightful. Can you elevate her, please?
I can. Eloise, you're on.
Greetings.
Good evening. How are you?
Okay.
Excellent.
A little waterlogged, but I'll, I would like to see some of the state documents that you have for other projects to get a, a flavor for how they're written.
Yep. And that's your copy of the proposed, um, deed restriction also to show the affordable component.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'd just like to ask, why can't one of them be built at Wheeler Hill?
Wheeler Hill?
Isn't that the address for your new project?
Oh, you mean within the subdivision itself?
Yeah, yeah. Or on the outskirts of it.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
You're already on the land.
Yeah.
I mean, we would only be able to do one because it's just because of proximity. You'd have, you, they have to be, was it trying to a mile apart?
A mile apart.
Minimum of a mile apart. So we could possibly do one there, um, and then run off.
We could try to work out a location and, and maybe come in and propose that.
Yeah.
It's also going to depend on whether the Department of Developmental Services and the provider agency want that location. So, um, while it may be, you know, a, a good idea on the surf, oh. You still there?
Yeah, I'm still in.
All right. Thought my computer had closed down. Everything disappeared. Um, so, so it's going to depend on whether the pro, provider agency and the Department of Developmental Services approve that location. And I, I don't know, Steve, exactly where that location is. So I would need to run it by them.
It also depend on their, because they're maxed out at their sixty-six units for the water supply. And so they would have to.
We'd have to substitute it.
Yes. If they founded a well in, if they have enough room and it's on the outskirts, they put a well in.
Yep.
Yeah, right.
That's true money.
Yep.
Yep. A fair amount of the remaining portion of that land is going to be under CR though.
Yes.
Yes, but DSS has an exception to all zoning. That's how they came into Berlin. They never even went, they just went and got a building permit.
See, we, we're trying to be very transparent about everything we do everywhere we go.
It, it was a home built for four paraplegic men. Now they're only giving us credit for two. So Margaret is supposed to be in discussions to, you know, where are the other two? Well, we do keep, you know, we track our
Sure.
numbers.
That's the first time we've heard of that happening.
Well, if you look up on the SHI list under the town of Berlin, you'll see DSS own for, for, for two.
No, no, I don't question that it happened. It's just the first time we've heard of it happen.
And all I'm saying is you can verify it for yourself.
Well, I believe you.
Some, I realize I'm old and sometimes dyslexic.
I totally believe you.
Six P M. But, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise. So, um, I guess if there's no remaining questions from the board members, any other audience members? No? Okay. So can I propose that we, um, everybody does a little bit of homework. You can provide us some information and we can, um, reconvene the discussions at our next meeting if we're ready or the one in September, if, if we're not.
Your next meet August ninth, Tom?
Pardon?
Your next meeting, is your next meeting August ninth?
Um, it's, it's the second Tuesday in August. So is that the ninth? Might be.
We should be ready by then.
The tenth.
The tenth. Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. So Steve, you want to be at eight o'clock again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to do, are, are you not going to do it live in, in live meetings? Are you going to do Zoom or?
Um, well, we haven't, I, we haven't decided, uh, this meeting was decided, um, but we haven't talked about whether we're going to do it in person or whether we're going to do it remote. Um, if it is live, then unfortunately I'm going to be out of town. But if, if it's going to be Zoom, then I can participate.
I vote for Zoom.
You vote for Zoom? The majority is saying Zoom. So Steve, I would advise you that it's going to be Zoom.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish he would just build his affordable units. The rest of it I like, but.
I think we should be confident that we understand the economics.
Yeah, I wanted to chat with the ACABIT Regional Housing Consortium folks to see if they've seen products like this built. I mean, it, they cover such a big region that I would assume that something like this has happened that they're familiar with already. Even maybe not developer funded, like they're talking, the route they're going is developer funded because they're not going to get them built through the other means because the funds aren't available.
Right.
But evidently the programs were there initially.
Yeah, but that just means that. They're selling the property and taking back a note, basically. It's like they're providing the mortgage.
Yeah.
It's not like they're giving it to the. Organization that's going to operate it. They're selling it with the thirty year lease, you know, taking a thirty year note.
Yeah.
But we don't have to do a. Equal swap. If they want us to consider, we can say we want twelve units instead of ten.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at is I think.
Right.
Like the idea, I think we should make sure that it's fair to the town in that. You know, basically what, what they're contributing. Financially is roughly equivalent to what they would be contributing financially if they built the ten that we've asked them for. And the number is, I'm a little. I'd like to get some. Data to feel confident the numbers are right. I don't know. You know, you're. I think we should figure out what the sale price of the affordable units really would be. Right? Because that's really what they're getting for the other ones. And, you know, look at the cost difference. I, I'm having a hard time with there being a six, a factor of six cost difference. Between the units they were gonna build and these. I mean, these are basically. They're basically a five bedroom home. I mean, there's only two bathrooms in a normal five bedroom home. There would be more bathrooms. Right? And it doesn't, I don't know how many square feet they are and et cetera, et cetera. Just because they have wide corridors. And wide doors doesn't mean that the cost of me of building them goes up by a factor of five or something, right? So we should just. I mean, I think we should be responsible for understanding at least approximately what the economics are before we agree to it. And then the other thing is that. It, it's not really a single family home. I mean, it's, there's five unrelated occupants who are either paying to be there or somebody is paying for them to be there. But it's basically, it's like a rooming house. It's five rentals. It's like building a house that has five rental units in it. So, and I think last time we looked at. The provision you were talking about, Tim, where you could build a single family home that looked, or you build a multifamily property that looked like a single family home under certain conditions. I'm trying to remember. There were some restrictions on that, but maybe it was, maybe this doesn't, maybe this meets the restrictions. I'm not sure. You know, there are a bunch of caveats about being allowed to do that. Last time I looked at it, I remember.
Right.
Yeah.
No, when you think about. Five independent affordable units with. Five less, less elaborate kitchens than this one, but still five kitchens, five. You know, and you're talking about, you know, probably ten or. Seven and a half baths at least, probably, you know, and. Now we're talking about two fairly substantial baths, but still, I mean, it, you do begin to wonder how the dollars break out.
Yeah, because normally the more units you build in one structure, the less the cost is per unit.
Yeah.
So we're going from duplexes to a fiveplex. I don't know. I mean, it's hard. Not sure we get that information because. You want to get it from a third party who's got no skin in the game, right?
Well, it'd be interesting to hear if the state is, is keen on seeing these developed as, as these folks suggested. I mean, it sounded as though. The state wants the stops pulled out as much as possible and they want these constructed throughout the Commonwealth. That, that whole one mile apart issue. You know, you think about towns east of us, cities east of us with. I mean, we're thirteen square miles, but. I mean, there's certainly a lot of towns east of us that are smaller than that and. You know, you begin to think about how many of these can be accommodated. Why would the state want to limit the number? So dramatically. If they're after as many of these as they could. See developed, you know?
Please, if there's a downside.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what. I touch with our friends. We, we're part of this consortium now. It's timely. We'll see what they have to say. And I'll, anything I learn, I'll share around as soon as I get it. So we can all mull on it.
Yeah, they'd have to buy. Two parcels of land to build them on, too. Large enough and dry enough to have a five bedroom septic system on.
Yep.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, their development cost before they put the foundation in is going to be three hundred thousand dollars.
And, and what he's saying is that, that any site that they find might not be acceptable to one of these nonprofits or, or the state for that matter. I mean, they're saying they have to get approval from the, the provider agency as well as the Department of Developmental Services. So. There's a lot of hoops for them to jump through.
Just to not build ten affordable units in that project.
Yeah, so there's got to be some dollar incentive here that's pretty significant. I think Jay's right.
Unless they're feeling philanthropic all of a sudden.
Yeah.
No one is.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, the piece of property that behind Wilson's that's been for sale forever would be a good location for something like this. It's right off the highway. It's up and back. It's private. Uh, but if they can only put one unit there, one five bedroom unit, then that.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus they subdivided it and, and, and. Did some other types of activity up in there. I mean, educational, religious, you know, use, that sort of thing, like the.
Your roadwork to get in there, though, to develop, it's going to be expensive.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. And a fair amount of that property is wet. I mean, there's a very small building.
Footprint.
Footprint, yeah.
Out of the.
Yeah. Yep.
You put a nice duck blind in there with a dirt road.
There you go.
Yeah.
Hey.
Okay, fantastic.
All right.
Well, that's it. That's all, uh, is on our agenda.
I have.
There's some timely items.
I have a timely item, I'm sorry to say.
No, don't be sorry.
Well, let me.
I have one quick thing after, Tim.
Excellent.
Me, too.
Ooh.
Emails I haven't looked at this week.
It's getting exciting, isn't it, huh?
We are a crazy group.
So. Let me look at this. So this, this impacts ban a door. So. Dave Litchwell wrote to the building inspector to say that the fire department had just come back from sixty-four Banner Road. That was the site that the.
Marijuana.
Facility was proposed for.
Yes.
And then Dave asks Richard, have you been in touch with the people at commodity connection location? We have never conducted a final inspection of that space, and I don't know what commodity connection is. The alarm was caused from workers sanding in another space that is being rented out. Not known who is moving in. Then while we were there, another new company is moving into the old marble space called. Uh, Xanax and Water Inc. Don't all these companies need to register with the town for a business certificate? I see some issues with the space. They're working in a common wall between units. That have no sheet rock on the wall. Please advise on paying a visit to the property. So. Eloise received this and she said, if the company is incorporated and using their incorporated name, a local business certificate isn't necessary. Otherwise, they should register for a business certificate. And then the building inspector says, yes, correct. What they should be doing is checking in with the building department for compliance with zoning bylaws. So the, the property is owned by. A gentleman named Keith. I forget his last name. He lives on Puddin Street here in Berlin. And Peter Hoffman had been, as part of the Economic Development Committee, having a dialogue with Keith. Particularly in regard to the marijuana use, which. Um, D C U wasn't willing to let them access the property over the right of way that they have. Through D C U's land and Marlboro wasn't interested in. Their accessing it through Marlboro land either. And I guess in. This case, right now, there's a, um, an issue with internet service on that site and. And D C U is unwilling to let the, the owner access. A line, I guess, through D C U's property to, to get internet down there either. So. It's a tricky site. It's zoned limited business, though. And if you look at limited business in our. Zoning bylaw. The, the uses are pretty limited. That's. An understatement, I guess. And. My sense is that if there's. A business that's supplying a service, like a landscaping business or something like that. It wouldn't probably qualify under the limited business zoning. And I would think the building inspector would then be sending these folks to the Board of Appeals. But there are a number of, I mean, I think there's three or four different businesses that are down there. But the way I interpret. Our zoning bylaw for limited business, it's. Pretty tight. But I think we may be included in some of these conversations. Before too much longer. And I just wanted everybody to be up to speed on that.
Okay.
Because if we look at the chart. Limited business. Nonprofit recreation, active recreation, golf course, private club, municipal uses, religious uses, public and private nonprofit, educational. Business of professional offices. Banks. And that's research and development offices or establishments. Residential conference. And then all the marijuana uses. So. If I was a landscaper, I would.
So the landscaper could have their office there, but not store their trucks or have their materials there.
Yeah, because if you look at sales rooms, building materials, contractors, all those things are not allowed. So I, I mean, I, I think. My comment to Peter, and I think Peter's comment to Keith was, you need to be talking to the building inspector. And that's the first thing you ought to do. Even if you're confident that the use that you're bringing in is allowed, you better go see the building inspector and get their blessing. Um, that's just prudent all the way around. And then once you've done that, if you've discovered that everything's fine, you're golden. And if not, then at least you've done the right thing and you can go through the Z B A and, and if you need site plan approval and a special permit. You can get those. And if you are trying to seek some sort of variance because the use is similar to and not more detrimental, then. Um, you might get the Z B A to agree that it's a, a use that's, that would be allowed. But. That's the news.
Excellent.
Always fun.
Carolyn, you have a timely item, right?
Uh, yeah, more informational. So the old site of the Hudson Police Station on Packard Street. This is in the Community Advocate, which we get at work and I read when it's slow. Is being developed by the town of Hudson's. Housing Trust. As an affordable. Let's see, affordable housing complex. But because it's being, the project is being submitted by the town, they have local control over what's happening. So I just thought it was an interesting. An interesting way for a town to address portable housing issues.
When, when we spoke with the Assabett Regional Housing Consortium folks. And explained that we didn't have a housing trust. And we had been searching with Central Mass to join up with other towns to create a joint housing trust for multiple communities. We said, so of the towns that are part of the consortium. Who doesn't have a trust? And, and they said, well, basically, everybody does. In fact, most towns around, particularly east of us, have got trusts. And there's a lot of towns west of us that do, too. And that, it's their advice was. Take the initiative and create the housing trust. And then you really do have control, like you're saying, Caroline, of. Being able to. Dedicate a site, you know, through tax title or whatever, and then, you know, you can proceed to. Develop and, and operate. And you're eligible for. Moving money around a lot more easily. I mean, that's our problem right now is the housing partnership as a group can do a lot, but it can't. Um, control property the, the way you would need to in order to accomplish some of these things.
Right.
So you're proposing that we take the old fire station that's on sixty-two and turn it into.
Into an apartment complex. Yeah, housing complex.
And the Old Town Barn.
Yeah.
Problem is, it's a shared water supply, so I don't.
Yep. No, it was just an interesting article. About how some, a town is taking local control over. Uh, their affordable housing stock.
So.
But they've had a housing authority for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they are part of the Metro West Collaborative, which I looked up and that is part. The Assabett Valley Consortium. I'm not sure which one's the umbrella, whether it's the Metro West Collaborative or the Assabett.
So. The Metro West is a, is an entity that. The, the consortium. Um, utilizes. That's the way I see the relationship.
Okay.
And they help supply services. And so each town sort of looks at the types of services it would want. And then from that, you do an estimate as to what your budgetary needs would be. And, and that's why we put that twelve thousand into the budget this last time around.
Right.
And that gives you X number of hours to manage your subsidized housing inventory and. And then to help with questions like the one we just had from Steve, you know, with. We can feel comfortable about getting in touch with them and saying. Give us some. Give us some some help.
Cool.
So that's my timely item.
Yeah, I've got one. So I'm just looking through the mailbox. Which I haven't been checking very often.
A planning board mailbox?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there. Good stuff. Apparently, all of our. Our computer was completely shut down by some hackers and they want money and stuff like that. There's a lot of great emails.
Yeah.
Shut everything down. How did I get the email?
Yeah, right?
Hey, guys, didn't do a very good job shutting everything down, guys.
Yeah.
Didn't send you any money. Okay, one of them is a inquiry inquiry for somebody. Who lives on Gates Pond Road and wants to put an addition on their house and wants to know. What they need to do to get approval. And that's building inspector, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's some called a building inspector. And but the other one is. Similar issue. They're thinking about buying some land in Berlin. And wanna know if it meets the frontage and acreage and whatever to make it a legitimate building lot. And that that is our domain, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was.
That up and they can look that up in the rules and regulations.
Well, they actually did. So there's a follow up email. It says, oh, yeah, I just found out about it. I was wondering, since I know you guys all spent most of the afternoon reading the um things I emailed you today. Well, we know Carolyn read the minutes because she found a mistake, so that's good. But I had written up that thing. There was a A and R checklist. Was wondering whether we should post that and say somewhere in the website that if you, you know, first step, if you wanna know whether you're. Building lots acceptable, just go through that checklist and see if you check all the boxes or not. And then you could fill it out, you know, online or something, and you could send it to us if you're coming in for an A and R hearing. You know, instead of repeating all that, you send us the form that you already filled out and we'll use it.
Like your flow chart, too.
Yeah.
You're suggesting that they fill out the Form A online?
Yeah.
Cause we do have a form.
We do?
Yeah.
Online?
Form A. It's not online.
Form A.
Yeah.
Oh, you want me to send me that? I'll look at it. Yeah. Maybe some combination of those.
It's in it's in the uh back part of the um subdivision.
Oh, it is?
Regulations.
Yeah, you should be able to put that on the website as a PDF that someone can fill out.
There if our rules and regulations are already online.
We didn't, as far as I know, we do not have the. Book, you know, the forty dollar book is not online.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
I just looked it up.
The twenty, is it eight twenty eighteen? Or what's the latest one, twenty nineteen?
Cause that was the whole argument. We used to sell them, and then they took the power away from us.
Oh, that's Eloise's fault.
Yeah, Eloise Eloise wants to talk.
Talk, let her talk.
Um, I only update the books when something goes to the Attorney General. When it comes back with the approval, then I update the book. So it won't be updated every year, but. For the last, I'd say, eight out of ten years, it has been updated every year.
So what year are we on, Eloise?
I believe we're on eighteen and nine, and then it was approved in nineteen.
Okay, so I thought, but is that eighteen book posted anywhere online?
Yeah.
Where?
Could be under the Z B A and under the planning board.
You go Town of Berlin, click.
Yeah.
And it says Town of Berlin, and you go to government, then you go to planning board, click. And then under planning board, it's Berlin Maps and Layers, Berlin Master Plan, Berlin Zoning Map, Open Space and Recreation Plan, Subdivision Control Bylaws, and the zoning bylaw. And you click on that and it says two thousand and eighteen, approved by the Attorney General, January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And posted and published on January sixteen, two thousand and nineteen.
And then you download it.
We're all set then.
And.
And if you if you do want your forms, um, James has the magical ability to do a fillable form.
Yeah, good luck.
I can do that also. I just.
But you you know, you could you could link it to your checklist.
Yeah.
Exactly. Just send it to us and we can, James can put it up.
Live link in it.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't even notice. I've been posting a lot of stuff on our planning board page. So any documents that like today that's. Those documents.
On my town government.
Yeah, well, I'll get posted. But that's, so we're talking about a different place then? We have we have two websites, right?
You wanna go to Town of Berlin, and that website is the one with all this information.
Oh, okay, cause I'm assuming.
Okay, my town government is supposed to be anything that you're talking about at a public meeting. So that the public can follow along.
Right.
So publishing them in the right spot, Jack.
Well, I mean, if if I can't find it, then I'm guessing a lot of other people can't find it, since there's two different websites. You have to know which one to go to, it sounds like.
Right, but.
Well, one is current and one is in general.
Right, and if someone was to Google. Town of Berlin, they would get the site that Tim's talking about.
Right.
Not necessarily the My Town Government.
Although My Town Government is referenced on the town's website. I don't care.
I worry a little bit that we're, at least all this work that we're doing and everything we're posting is on a free. Website that probably has no security to it whatsoever.
All public record anyways. Everything we deal with is public record.
Well, I mean, all the minutes, I'm posting them on that website, but it's a. I doubt there's.
Record.
Yeah. I'm just saying, somebody can hack it like the. Email I got in the inbox today, right? They could actually be successful in shutting it down. And we could decide it's not worth, you know. Sending them half a million dollars to turn it back on, and then all that stuff gets lost or has to get reposted somewhere else.
Um, does my town? Does it get backed up anywhere?
Probably.
Yeah.
It's it's you can you can email him. He's very accessible.
It's it's one guy, and he's doing it out of the goodness of his heart for free.
Correct. And he did it for his.
Spending fifty thousand dollars a year to make sure it's secure.
Well, well, that's his job.
Well, it's not an easy job. Making websites secure is not easy.
Right, but honestly, the emails that you get, that's Google security. That has nothing to do with.
Well, the email's coming in and, you know, I don't click on it, obviously, but if you do click on it, it's gonna get on someone's computer and find its way to the server.
Right.
That's why I go to security training every Wednesday at two.
What do they tell you about our our two websites?
Don't open anything.
If you don't know, hover over the name, make sure they they spell them similar. Or they'll do, instead of a zero, they'll do an O, so you really have to pay attention. And if in doubt, delete it.
Yeah. Well, maybe I'll put some on our page that references the other websites so people can find the zoning bylaws.
Sure.
Or just posting both places, why not?
We can, I think I have them on the Z B A too. Precisely for that reason. And we leave up the prior just because, just because.
Yeah. That's all the news from the clerk's department tonight.
Excellent. Thank you.
I mean, the planning board clerk, don't you always?
Nice job.
So I have a timely item for everybody. Actually ran it by Timothy, so um. And it's full disclosure, so we can all decide whether it's a it's going to be an issue going forward or not. So we have a dispute on a piece of property down the Cape. The piece of property is owned by my wife entirely, has nothing to do with me. I don't own have any ownership in it. I reached out to Tim to get Chris Senni's email address and talked to him about representing my wife. Down there in the matter between us and the neighbor behind us. So she's engaged to him, but I said to Senni, it's arm's length. I don't wanna have anything to do with it. You're going to deal with my wife. The discussions would be with her, everything else, because I don't wanna have any specter of conflict of interest with us. He's actually had an associate of his that's doing the legal work, who works with him. So just wanna be a hundred percent transparent to everybody in the group that there's nothing that's going to. Influence my decision and that it's arm's length transaction. We just look for somebody that we were familiar with. And could deal with representing us down there.
So, but Chris isn't actually representing you.
The his firm is, and the lawyer that's working with him, her name is Victoria or something or other. Um, she's the one that's doing the the work, the the physical work. But the letterhead and the and stuff that she's doing, says Senni and Associates.
You're paying the standard rate?
Uh, I don't even know what the rate my wife negotiated with her. So I have no idea. I'm assuming that it's a, I told them I didn't want any favors. So they have engaged. She has signed a um. An engagement letter so that there is a a fee and there is a, you know, the whole structure is there.
Right. Eloise, is that a new hand up or is that just remaining?
It's just remaining, sorry.
Okay, no problem. I'll I can put it down. I just.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, but I mean, isn't Eloise our coach when it comes to conflict of interest and all that stuff?
Uh, if you want to make, if you wanna put something in writing, fine. I think putting it on uh. My town government. Also works.
So if it's disclosed, it's okay?
For the most part, there's not, if you're an appointed, you go to your. Whoever appoints you, and they have to absolve you of any problem. An elected official has no, no umbrella.
No, but I mean, I think where. As Tom said, it's. It's um. There there are multiple.
You being transparent.
Multiple layers that are distancing him from this and and uh. It's not town related. It's, you know, on and on and on. So I think he's done the right thing.
Do we wanna put anything in the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I disclosed this.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and if something truly controversial comes up with the Sennys, which I can't imagine it will, you can always recuse yourself for that one thing.
Right.
Yeah. Awesome.
The name of the law firm?
Senni and Associates. And I'll give you the name of the woman.
Hmm, I don't think I need that.
You don't? Okay. You got it right here if you want it.
Awesome.
All righty.
You want a motion?
Sure.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Nice job.
Hearing none, I'll have to call it by roll, call, vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye.